Good evening and welcome to the Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13 School Board Meeting for Tuesday, October 13th. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again and welcome. Laura, if you'd call the roll.
Louis?
Here.
Landwear?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Palmer? Here. And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up is the Agenda Approval Adjustments and Announcements and Correspondence. For approval of the agenda, could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Molly? Laura, thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Announcements, October 15th and 16th, there's no school teacher convention. October 20th, Tuesday at 5:00 PM, we'll have a listening session here in the community room. October 20th at 5:30, also a Tuesday school board work session here in the community room. October 27th at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. November 9th is a Monday, there's no school, it's a grading day. And November 10th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. Next is correspondence. Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence?
Mr. Chair members, there's no correspondence tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Communications to the Board. If you haven't already and you wish to speak, I would ask that you fill out a blue card. For those of you that have been to the previous meetings, I'll ask you to bear with me as I go through and explain the expectations for our meeting tonight. As always, I ask that everyone remain respectful throughout the night. Again, it is important that everyone feels that they have been heard. We'll allow three minutes per speaker. And Director Holmgren will have the cards. He'll be the timer. If you go over your time and you do not appear to be wrapping things up, I will stop you or interrupt you and ask you to finish at that point. So please, that would be uncomfortable for me to have to stop you, so please watch the time closely tonight if you would. And as we have previously, I would like everyone to practice protocols of civility. As you speak, be respectful. Please address the issues and the actions versus personal attacks. Again, I would prefer not to have to address this, so please keep that in mind. If you have spoken at one or both of the previous meetings and your message is the same, I definitely want you to know that your message has been heard. In deference to time and the amount of things we have on the meeting this evening, we're going to start with anyone that has not spoken previously. At that point, if there are others that want something to add, that they've spoken previously and have something that they want to add, we welcome that. Please understand, I'm not discouraging anyone to speak tonight, but again, in the interest of being able to do business of the Board, we operate under time constraints, as some of you are aware, where we're not able to take up new items after 10:45. And we have some things on our action items tonight that it's imperative that we get to those and we address those. As previously, I would ask that when you come to the mic, that you state your name and your address, and we can move forward. The meeting, the Personnel Report and the Treasurers Report for August 2015. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please?
Motion.
Grant.
Second.
What? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Opposed? Check that. Motion carries. Next up is Discussion Reports and Information Items, reports from members of the Board. Board members will report on activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Grant, you want to go first?
Sure. Okay, this will be, I guess, the start to my resignation, so I guess I want to talk to the students first. You know, I know some of you guys are attending. You know, no matter what's happened, you know, in the last month or so, you know, I do want to say, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I'm proud of you. You're standing up for the right reasons, you really are. And, you know, a lot of people, we are a good city, we do embrace diversity. And I think there's a lot of people here that I've, you know, grown up to admire. You know, they push that and, you know, I see it in every single one of you. And, you know, there's no ill will, you know, I'm not upset, you know. This position is not, it's just a position, you know, but I'm still going to be around the community and we're still going to move forward, so, and embrace each other, so. To the members of the Board, the three, you know, I know you guys were, you know, you're fighting for the right reasons, you know, and I understand that, and, you know, I respect all three, you know, you three, Ted, and I respect you two, you're fighting for the democratic process, you know, for the public to have a right to vote, you know, their vote. I think, and Kathy, you know, I admire you too, you know, I mean, you do a good job managing, educational services are great, you know, I do think they're, you know, they're good. So, I'm going to read my statement, and then I'm going to walk out and let the Board get back to business. So, you know, I guess I'll read it. This district has been an important part of my whole life. I have loved being a part of it. I am glad for the ways I was able to make it better, both as an active community member and in my short time on the school board. I take responsibility for the online Facebook comment about some of my coworkers at my full-time job in Chanhasan that was offensive to the Muslim community. I apologize to them all for the hurt it caused. I have learned a lot more about cultural differences in this experience. I realize we need to work together to accommodate student needs. In that, I request the school board follow the lead of Minneapolis Community and Technical College and Mankato State University to install a foot washing station and bidet in at least one men's and one women's bathroom for at least the high school. As we welcome more students of diversity, this would show the sincerity of our welcome. I want to thank Ahmed Albury, Representative Carolyn Lane, and City Councilmember Donna Schmidt, as well as Dr. Khan and Yulani Hussein of CARE. I also want to, I appreciate the assistance in helping me work through this difficult situation in the right way. I also want to strongly suggest that any future difficult incidents such as this be handled first directly with the individual involved, whether it be a student or a board member, as well as seeking education and resolution before escalating an immediate response. I care very much about the students of the district, so in order to end this current turmoil for the good of the district and its students, I will resign on Tuesday, October 13th, 2015. Let's get back to moving forward with progress for all individuals in Columbia Heights Public Schools. Go Heights. Here's Grant Nichols. And I think with that, you know, I'm going to shake, you know, I want to shake all your guys' hands, so, you know, to part, and then, you know, I'm going to go outside for a little bit, so. So, Laura.
(inaudible)
I will defer my report for this evening. Molly?
I'll defer my report for this evening as well.
Laura?
I attended a 9/16 Board meeting, but at this moment, I couldn't think of exactly what happened, so can I defer until the next meeting?
Not a problem.
We've got a big, long one.
No problem. Ted?
Just real briefly, the WMAP Board did pass a budget of about $1.8 million, so that's been passed.
Superintendent Kelly?
I'm going to defer my report for another Board meeting.
Okay. Next up on the agenda is the Opening of School Building Updates. I think we have a host of presenters, the principals from each of the buildings.
And Kristen.
Oh, and Kristen.
Sorry.
I knew that. Okay, the Board will be presented with information on opening of school activities each building. Highland Elementary Building Update will be presented in November. They're going to be doing their vision card at the same time, so rather than duplicating, they'll be coming back to see us, so, welcome. Who gets to go first?
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the School Board, Superintendent Kelly. It's our pleasure to come and describe for you all the opening of our school year. It's been a great start to our school year in terms of academic learning, and I'm pleased to be here with the principals. I'd like to start off with our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools creates worlds of opportunities for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Thank you. And this evening, we'd like to reaffirm all of our core values: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation.
I'm going to interrupt you for just a second. Can we get at least those two doors closed, so it's a little bit quieter, please? Sorry.
That's okay.
Just want to be able to hear you. I think those will be okay.
That's okay. The school year started for our earliest learners with early childhood family education and our pre-K program. And I think one of the things that we're most excited about this year is that for our pre-K four-year-olds, we started out the school year at all three elementaries. It's been a great start for our four-year-olds here in our school district where now they are, we're able to provide transportation for all of the four-year-olds that live within the school boundaries. And the busing has gone very well for our four-year-olds, they've really been looked out for with the older children. And so they are continuing to learn, all of our curriculum instruction and assessment is aligned from ECFE through pre-K 3, pre-K 4, and on to kindergarten.
As well, and I'd say the most exciting things that we've seen have been a lot of the changes in our learning studios. We did move our second grade learning studio to become a fifth grade learning studio. We didn't move the studio, it's still in the same place, but we do have the staff that started things in second grade, and they're coming full circle with this year's fifth graders. This year's fifth graders are the group I like to call our beta group. They're the group that they were the first studio class, and so they've come back to their original studio with their original teachers, and it's going incredibly well. All of our studios, as well as all of our classrooms, are running quite well. Another highlight is our personalized learning initiative, and that's been an awful lot of fun. The first couple of weeks, the students had to walk around with their little cardboard cutouts that looked like little tablets until they completed all of the education around it. And I was fortunate that I was able to be a part of the digital citizenship instruction. I do a piece for all of our third, fourth, and fifth graders on maintaining your digital footprint, which of course is very consistent with respect and integrity. And I tell them stories about, you know, how we go about hiring people when we're in Columbia Heights and we're looking for new teachers and new staff people. And the first thing that we do is a Google search, because we want to know, we want to know how they've maintained themselves and how they present themselves. And that's one of my favorite things I get to do all year long. And our kids are fantastic, our staff is fantastic, and we're just thankful that we get to be a part of this wonderful district.
Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, and Board members. Valley View, I'm going to reiterate what Ms. Stunkel mentioned about the four-year-olds. That's a highlight for Valley View and for me. Twenty-two years ago, and it was a Minneapolis public school at the time, my first principal job was the last time I had four-year-olds in my building. And somehow I thought that truly it would have happened before now, and so it's a pleasure to have them in our building, and it's fun seeing them every day. The other thing I wanted to mention was our facility, as well as the, it's complete. We have our new addition kindergarten classrooms and the pre-K classroom, new art, science room, and a wonderful conference room, which we're anxious to get, have some meetings in there as well. Our enrollment is up. We're a couple students higher than what we were this time last year, nine students higher than we were, than we ended the previous year. I guess I'd say about the status of our school and where our teachers and students are, we're a responsive classroom school. We very much believe in rituals and routines, that's what we've been working on, setting the tone in the building for the remainder of the year. Superintendent Kelly always says, "Go slow to go fast," and that's really our plan, so we can, we're very close to being able to feel like we can accelerate our learning and have a highly productive school year that's intensively focused on our own academics.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board, excited to be able to talk about Columbia Academy. It's an energetic place, full of positive energy from kids that are at that very interesting stage in their lives, and very excited to be part of it. It's been a great joy of mine personally to be able to get to know the kids that are there. We're talking at Columbia Academy about "rise up," and you can see that those core values are things that we talk about often in our district, that respect and integrity and strength, that we talk about excellence, especially in our academics, understanding, and then pride. And so we've been working on each of those, and we will work on those throughout the school year, as we really try to set a culture of academics in the building, a positive culture where kids care about each other and care about their school. Lots of exciting things, though, that are going on with that. One of the big things is our AVID program. Coming to Columbia Academy for the first time, we're excited to have it in sixth grade, but also to be using the concept of organization and what that means to college and career readiness in all of our grades. So we are emulating what's happened at Valley View, we're using their process, and it's working, I believe, very well for us to have it as a communication point with parents and develop that skill with our students. The other thing that we really are trying to build is that concept that there are many great things that you can be involved in, whether that's athletics, or whether that is activities like our musical that is coming up, or whether that is painting the school store so that you can have that kind of experience with us and work as a web leader. Those are all positive ways to be involved, and I'm excited to see our students rising up and making our school better every day.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. The high school is really excited for the start of the school year. Number of celebrations that we have is we continue to focus on college and career readiness for our students, and we continue to collaborate with the University of Minnesota with our ramp-up to readiness programs for all students at all grade levels. We are excited with the endorsement of the Board to have our early college program for starting with the opportunity to receive an AA degree from Anoka Ramsey, and that started off with our ninth grade class with intensive math support. We're excited about our enrollment as it continues to tick upward. We're excited for our new staff that we have, our enrollment in our AP classes has increased. We are at full capacity in our programs of Genesis Works, College Possible, and we're working with our check-and-connect staff. We are also excited to celebrate our concert choir, who has received one of two invitations from the state of Minnesota to participate in the Wisconsin Clearwater Invitational in April. We also, at the high school, have embraced and always will continue to embrace real expectations. And I think in the weeks behind us, we have really embraced our core values and celebrate one another at the high school. And I think the, all four of them, respect, education, excellence, positive attitude, and loyalty for one another has come out clear at the high school, and we're excited as a high school family to continue to embrace our core values and support our family at the high school. We've also have some exciting news that has happened. Our journalism program participated in the state Journalism Convention, and this year they won, the September issue won the best show in the state of Minnesota. And they also received, last year, which happened in September as well, recognition for overall excellence in the school newspaper for 2015, the Gold Award, and that was given to one high school. So congratulations to Jill Jungers and our students as well. We had, pause. We continue to, we had academic award lettering last Wednesday evening, and celebrated over 70 of our students having accumulated GPA of 3.67 or greater. We're excited for that celebration. And I believe that will do it for the high school.
Any questions for anybody at the table?
I just have one question. How are the life skills coming? Are we the persistence, collaboration, those sort of things?
I'll follow up.
Most of the schools, what we're doing is there are so many of them, that we are choosing one per month, or in some cases, we're choosing to really focus on three or four of them to try to master them this year, and then move and expand to all of them next year. But there is specific focus that is going in each of our classrooms on life skills.
And if I might just add that in our early childhood family education program, we focus on the life skills not only with the children, birth to five, but also with the parents and the parent education, and also in our pre-K program.
As Mr. Sausic mentioned, we do similar. We have a life skill that we identify per month, as well as one of our, the CAREs, the acronym for Responsive Classroom Cooperation Assertion Responsibility Empathy and Self-Control. So we take one of those per month, plus one of the lives, one or two of the life skills per month, and that's the focus of our staff for that particular month.
At the high school, we have embrace vocabulary words, which would be a test strategy, and that is done weekly. We've embedded the 11 life skills, as well as our real expectations, that we'll do in conjunction with our Highlander News Network and our staff every day for a week.
We're connecting our life skills to those that we've identified and "rise up," and it is a daily part of what we do. We have decided this year not to just do it at the beginning of the day, but for every teacher and every period of the day to address it, so, and that will go on throughout the entire school year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Sounds like you've been busy. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Next up on the agenda is the Indian Land Tenure Foundation Recognition and Curriculum, and start with Xena.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the Board. We are going to present information on the recognition received by the Indian Land Tenure Foundation. Here to present with me is Tara Tuckrell, Curriculum Coordinator, and Nicholas Emmons from the Indian Land Tenure Foundation. So our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and we'll focus on three of the core values: community, collaboration, and respect. So we're going to talk to you about professional development and curriculum that led to the recognition from the Indian Land Tenure Foundation. We began last year, the last few years, attending courses through West Metro Education Program that focus in on Native American education, both about Native American topics and for our Native American students. We have had a team of people attend the State NISWA, which is a Native American week-long conference held on an Indian reservation. So this last summer, it was in Prairie Island. This upcoming year, it will be up in Bemidji to work on curriculum development there. And we were contacted by Nicholas Emmons from the Indian Land Tenure Foundation, and he came to work with us in teaching and learning to talk about the opportunities that we weren't, we didn't realize how many opportunities there were, and how much curriculum had already been developed and was available for us through this partnership. Our administrative team, along with some of our teachers, have attended the Bedotee Field Trip. So Bedotee is a Dakota word where the Minnesota River and the Mississippi River come together right near St. Paul below Fort Snelling, and so it's a sacred place. And so we were able to, along with some of the teachers, were able to attend a guided tour of some of the sacred Dakota areas in St. Paul, the caves, the mounds, places like that. And we began to look to the Minnesota Humanities Center. They offer a program called the Absent Narratives, and teachers volunteered their time during spring break last year to attend a Saturday, to attend a full day of training, really learning about what has been absented, which voices have been absented out of our curriculum, and how can we be aware and really make sure that we're providing inclusive curriculum for our students. Currently, the administration is reading, is working on a book study around Native American topics as well. So we have, we have a lot of things going on in this topic, and Tara's going to talk with you a little bit about why we began, why we started our inclusive curriculum process with Native American topics.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, and members of the Board. How we started by looking at, for the Native American strand, was looking at the standards. We went back to the Minnesota standards and identified where it was specifically listed and where it generally was listed. And from the chart, you can see it went all the way from K all the way up to 12th grade, that there were standards around American Indians. And some of them were specific about Minnesota tribes and other ones were more general, and we found it in all the different content areas, arts and English, it was even in physical education. So we presented that to our teachers by sharing that it is part of the Minnesota State Standards. And then we really talked about what our objective was. Part of our objective is for our students to see themselves in our curriculum, but also to make sure that the Native American perspective and narrative is part of our curriculum. So to know that we met this objective, we are ensuring that our teachers are putting their information in curriculum documents on Atlas, so we're able to see and pull exactly where we are meeting that standard. And then also for our teachers to be able to reflect. How do they feel in terms of the professional development that Xena had talked about, as well as the resources that they have in order to meet that objective?
So here you can see an example of a poll from our Atlas, which is our online curriculum warehouse, where if we type in keywords, "Native American" and "American Indian," we can get an instant snapshot, because we've moved our curriculum on to Atlas, of where Native American units and lessons are being taught. And so this is, we want to just show this to you as part of our monitoring process. So we're not doing, we're not conducting one training session and then we go on to another topic, but this is part of our implementation process, so we can see where we're at and where we need to support. So there are a lot of standards in the high school, and you can see that's the largest slice of the pie. So I'm going to, we'll show you in a minute some of the curriculum pieces that we've adopted and looked at. One way that we select curriculum is to look at it through this lens, a spectra around Native American topics, so you can see the different topics listed there. So for example, instead of choosing books that are depicting Native Americans only in the past, or only struggling, or only being defeated, we wanted to ensure that our Native American students were seeing themselves in the present day, seeing themselves succeeding, right? succeeding, right? So here's a photo of all of the books that we purchased to supplement the new literacy curriculum in grades three through five, that supplement the regular curriculum. And then as, a couple of examples from that spectra is, on the left, you can see, here's a Native American student in one of the books here. That doesn't show her in the past, it shows her in present day, right? And it's really important for kids to see themselves today, being successful. And then also exposing our kids to texts that are written by and about Native Americans, so about Minnesota Native Americans, by a Minnesota Native American, so you can see, integrating the Native language itself. So instead of writing about the other, it's this more integrated and inclusive practice. Here you can see that we go into classrooms and follow up with students and teachers and support in the classrooms. So here's an example of students who've read a Native, one of the Native American texts that you saw in the photo, and then applying it to the state standards by examining two different other sources and relating them all back together. So this is a student, I mentioned the Bedotee, where the Mississippi and the Minnesota River meet. So you can see the student is doing an exploration on the Bedotee Memory Map website, and then we'll compare that to the information that's listed on our Fort Snelling website. So part of that spectra, again, is students working in collaboration, our core values, and then the use of the original sources. So students can, through the Personalized Learning Initiative that we have at fifth grade, students can see firsthand from a Native American person what their perspective is. So we're trying to encompass, you know, not just one book written by someone, but different media sources as well. So with that, I would like to invite Nicholas Emmons to say a few words about the recognition.
The Indian Land Tenure Foundation has a pretty comprehensive curriculum that aims to better inform both Native and non-Native students about Native issues, specifically land issues, because in many Native communities, as we see anecdotally, land and the environment's a very important part. Well, the Indian Land Tenure Foundation created this curriculum at the beginning of the 2000s, which is now over a decade old. Unfortunately, it's continuing to grow. But we have been so impressed with the teachers here at Columbia Heights and using their curriculum. It has been one of the most encouraging parts of our education programs to date, that we wanted to provide some sort of recognition to the school district for the work that they've been doing here. And, you know, it's my understanding that the school board is completely on board with this inclusive excellence, and I have to say, it has been such a pleasure to work with the teachers here. Even the other day, I received a phone call from an art teacher. And I'm happy to communicate with teachers of all the disciplines, to be able to talk about whatever I can do to help them infuse Native land, history, culture values into the curriculum. Because it doesn't just benefit the Native students, it benefits non-Native students too. The more we know about history, the more we're going to be able to avoid making those same mistakes. And that's what this curriculum aims to do. So we did recognize the school district for their efforts in this. This went out to 5,000 people in our universe through an email blast, in addition to our blogs and social media. So again, we do appreciate your efforts and very good job.
Are there any questions?
No, I was going to say thank you, but I wanted to make sure it was done first. May I have questions?
No, I'm thrilled. I'm just thrilled. Thank you.
I just want to say, in an age where we are worried about teaching to the test all the time, it's nice to see we can do this as well and have this kind of training. Thank you.
It's a great example for other schools in the state. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. And thanks, Max, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Next is the building vision card for Valley View. The board will be presented with information on the vision card for Valley View Elementary. Xena and Principal Fort, and, your name wasn't on there, John. John Awesome.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Principal Fort will present you with information from the Valley View Elementary Score Card.
Vice Principal.
Awesome.
Awesome is going to present the first few slides, and then I'll start with the MCA data.
We'll start with our mission. Of course, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with support of small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Of course, our core values are what guide our every move at Valley View Elementary: community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Our attendance is very robust, as the slide shows. We are at currently 546 students, which is up nine students from the end of last year, and we anticipate staying robust throughout the year. Briefly about our demographics, we obviously have a very rich demographic. Our ethnicity remains one of our main positives of our school, the ability to touch every, many different cultures throughout the day, and touch the world with every learner. And then finally, our enrollment by special population. Currently, we are at eighty-four point three free and reduced lunch. We have nine point three percent special education students, and our English learners are at thirty-six point four percent.
Okay, our, this is our MCA data over the last four years. Orange is the color of the year. You can see math, we had a pretty substantial drop from seventy-one percent to forty-five percent. Reading, forty-seven percent to thirty-nine percent, and science, forty-one percent to thirty-seven percent. So what I would say about that is we've, we've had quite a few meetings, we've analyzed our data, it's been discussed in team meetings, and we have put in place plans, team plans and school plans to, that we think will help us realize substantial improvement in all three curricular areas. Strategic roadmap, you can see our vision, core va, our mission, our core values, our vision and strategic directions. Give a second on that for people. Okay. Okay, our scorecard. Traditionally, what I have done is just addressed the areas that were level three or below, or in the cases where there were changes. So if that's okay, I'll do the same thing tonight. With that, the first one, where we see a change is A5. And we, we moved up. I'd say our, in the, the 21st century, learning has been enhanced by our Media Arts Specialist Class. Kindergarten to fifth graders receive Media Arts once every four days. Of course, the fifth grade Personalized Learning Initiative is now down in the elementary, so our fifth graders, as well as other elementaries, are, have that technology. Schoolology we use, we used flipped math instruction in fifth grade. So we feel as though with those additions that we, we're progressing. So we moved to level four there. In addition, you know, we continue with, from several years ago, the four Cs: collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and communication. And Avid has helped us with levels of questioning by our teachers, and the answers that our students give, they have to be more complex as a result of the questions that the teachers ask. So we feel as though we are progressing in that area. Okay, on this page, I would say, we went down, A7. The presence of multi-tiered interventions for academics, reading and math. Well, our scores went down. So we're not doing the kind of job that we need to be doing in addressing the needs of all of our students, from our gifted students to our tier-three or our lower-performance students. So that, of course, is something that we're working on, we're trying to figure that out. We don't have all the answers yet. If we did, we wouldn't have an achievement gap. So we do have an achievement gap, and as you see, our data's down, so we're working very hard to improve in that area. Okay, B1, we went down from level three to level two. We had forty-six percent, second grade is the only area that we do map testing. Forty-six percent of our children, second graders, met their growth targets in math. B2, thirty-seven percent met their growth targets in reading. B3, we had some movement as well. We went from five to one. And that difference was unfortunately very high, based on our Hispanic student scores. Nine percent made growth compared to sixty-eight percent of our white students, that's a fifty-nine percent difference, and that's why we're at level one in that area. Math, not quite as severe, but we had a twenty-eight point difference in our Hispanic students at thirty-six percent that met the growth compared to sixty-four percent of our white Okay, number B5, these, this is MCA data. Reading scores were thirty-nine percent, so that puts us in that level one area. B6, we were at forty-five percent for math. That's also in the level one area. B7 is, we were science for thirty-seven percent, so that puts us at level two. Okay, we went from B14, we went from level three to level two there. We have a thirty-five percent difference in our referral rates of our black students, they're thirty-four percent of our population, and last year, they made up sixty-nine percent of our referrals. So that is a decrease there. Smart goal, we have, as we do need, as we, where we should be, we have a, we are expecting our goal is ten percent in every ethnic cell for 2016 in our MCA data for third through fifth graders in the reading tests. Math goal, same thing, ten percent improvement every cell, third through fifth grade in math. Science, same ten percent in science, and then fifth graders only take that test. And behavior, we are, we're sticking with ten percent, but we're actually, we're in, within our staff, we're shooting for twenty percent. We figure that's maybe one of our key areas that students need to be in the classroom to receive the quality instruction, and that's going to help us academically. So we have a lot heftier goal than what we have listed here. Valley View, continuous improvement goals, focus on literacy. We're going to focus on comprehension lessons and also incorporating grade-level text. Common Core standards focus on students grappling through grade-level text. That's a, that's a focus that we had down on our Title I plan, and that's a focus of our academic committee for all of our grade levels. Second one, inclusive curriculum with attention to Native American standards and resources. We, this is part of our, what we want to do is, is have our students see themselves in the, in the literature that they read, and also any resources that we have to be dedicated this year or in future years on Native American, our Native American people. And then we're supporting our students, kindergarten through second grade. Deb Peterson, University of Minnesota, we've already talked to her about coming out and helping our teachers and students with comprehension strategies and improve our writing. Focus on math, fact fluency, we have all of our first quarter data, facts from all of our grade levels. We're piloting a new curriculum, six of our classrooms, two per grade level, third, fourth, fifth grade, and that's coming up pretty soon. So we're excited about that opportunity. We will continue to focus on formative assessments in our core curricular areas. Teachers need to know what the students, what they know and what they don't know. I see just about every class that I'm in, teachers are using exit, exit tickets to assess that particular lesson and to determine how well the kids did, and then they'll make adjustments if they need to come back the next day and refocus on that lesson, then they'll do that. So we'll continue that work. Avid, this is one of the things I didn't mention in our opening of the school year piece, but we had a wonderful visit from about thirty-five of our visitors throughout the nation, I think it was thirteen, fourteen states that came to Valley View, and it was a wonderful experience. They were really impressed with our students, our staff. Thank you to Xena Stenwick and Tara Tuckrell and Jen Babish, who helped us get prepared for this visit. It was a fun day. It was really a fun day. You can see what, part of what we do with our Avid program. This is the third year of our Avid program, kids focus on note-taking, organization, levels of thinking and questioning, school culture of college and career readiness, and family communication. That's a piece that I can't say enough about, with the planners going home and our parents, well over ninety percent of our parents signing those planners nightly, is a piece that I'm really, really pleased with, that we feel a connectedness with our parents and students and what we're doing here at school. And this is the visit that I was just telling you about. You want to think, anything you want to say about the visit?
So Valley View was selected as kind of a learning site for avid educators, avid elementary educators from across the nation, and Principal Fort graciously agreed with support to allow, for a couple of hours, avid educators from around the nation to come and visit. So there was a panel discussion, parents came, students talked, teachers talked, and then the other, meanwhile, the other group was being led by, as you can see, the fifth grade avid student coaches. So these are fifth graders who applied for this position as an avid coach, and they were tour guides for a brief amount of time, and they were able to tell the avid educators about what a growth mindset is versus a fixed mindset. They could show them all of their organizational tools, how they conduct the writing process, and other avid elements. So it was, it was a big deal, and we were really excited that, in just the third year of Avid, that Principal Fort was asked to host this event.
So with that being said, I, we did have the discussion, we prob, we had the opportunity to be a, is it calling?
Demonstration.
A demonstration school or site. That was something that I declined to pursue. Last year, we had quite a few visitors to our school for any number of reasons, and this was the one visit that I says, okay, we're there, we're gonna, we're gonna do, we'll have visitors in, but we're pretty much feeling like we're gonna kind of close down, and we want to attend to our academic work we need to do this year, and kind of, kind of close down on the visitors, number of visitors that we have, and really, really kind of get back to the basics with what we're doing at school, so. Media Arts, very exciting program. You can see the definition there, real quick. And this year in Media Arts classes at Valley View, students will be introduced to photography, digital design, sound production, video, and animation. The Media Arts classes are primarily iPad-based. There are lots of great iPad apps that make media art creation very accessible for elementary students. Right now, students are focusing on photography and using an app which allows them to record a message and animates their face as the message plays. The students have really enjoyed working with the app, and their teachers learning a lot about them by watching their finished videos. a lot about them by watching their finished videos. Many of the students would agree that they are especially looking forward to creating stop-motion animation later in the year. So fun, new addition to our curriculum over at Valley View, and we're pleased to have the program, to pilot the program. And there's our wonderful teaching staff. Picture of our staff there, and if you have any questions? Questions? Anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment. WMAP, West Metro Educational Partnership, is looking into ways to use strategies and research to close the achievement gap. So I would just put that out there as possibly more of a resource for you in the future, because that's what they're focusing on more.
Thank you. Thank you.
I actually do have one question. Where are we at with growth? I mean, what, you know, because the students are where they start, and we look at making gains, you know, over where they should be at a grade level, if they're not at a grade level already. So where do we need to focus on getting, because it looks like, because you were going like gangbusters for a couple of years there, so are we, is growth still there, or?
Yeah, excuse me, I didn't let you finish your statement.
Yeah, I'm kind of stumbling around what I'm trying to ask, but I...
I think the teachers would say, yes, there's growth there. We can't put our fingers on exactly what, the math, I think, well, it was really high. Our math percentage was higher than the state average for a period of time, so I, you know, we are, again, we tried to analyze, we talked about today in a fifth grade meeting, we've talked a little bit about number sense. We're really increasing our focus on fact fluency for math, and of course, there's another piece about the kids. There was, one grade level last year had some attendance issues, some fairly strong attendance issues, which the teachers felt like might have potentially, probably potentially inhibited our test data there. So there's probably a number of things that, you know, happened, but I think we feel like we have a focus. We've identified the areas we need to beef up, and we have a strong staff, and we're ready to get at it and improve and increase our accelerated achievement for our students.
I know you're working at it hard. It was such a dramatic difference that I just, I am just kind of puzzled by it. You know, what's the, what is different now?
Yeah.
Or not there anymore. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there. I'm sure that that's probably been going through your mind fairly consistently.
Yeah. It pretty well stands out. If it was literacy, last year, it was the first time they had online reading tests last year, but that wasn't as dramatic as the math. We've been taking the math online for a couple of years, and we thought we had it pretty well figured out. We took the practice test, the OPA test, where, you know, you could take that up to two times, and I think our teachers had fairly well mastered the areas that we need to plug, because you got received information, strand activities about where the kids needed to improve, and, you know, we looked at the information from the MCA, like what percentages of the MCA include number sense, or algebra, or geometry, and those teachers would go back and hit those areas that they needed to hit to improve and get the kids prepared. So we did that work. We did some, the same work last year. Now, we're looking this year at maybe really trying to strategize and maybe not take even the practice test until later in the year, because some of the teachers are saying that it's really not that valid of information, just six years, I mean, six months, six weeks into the school year, that we may wait until later, until about mid-winter before we even take our first practice MCA test. And the teachers can also work on the pacing and getting to the work of, you know, what needs to be covered in the classroom. So all the things that we're working on with our responsive classroom and a good, strong focus on academics and the rituals and routines that I talked about earlier, we think are going to make, will make a difference.
Well, I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will. Like I said, it's just mostly, it's just such a difference that, you know, it kind of goes, what's going on? So, thank you.
Yep.
And I know you've got a great staff over there, and the kids are fabulous. I mean...
Yep.
They can do it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Comments?
I just have a comment, if I might. Or did you have one? Go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you.
Oh, okay. I wanted to circle back to two things. Number one, I wanted to thank Valley View for taking the risk of taking the pilot on in media arts. Diane Scully is still in the room, and so is Tara Tuckrell, and I wanted to thank the staff that, just as at North Park where they took on Learning Studios, Valley View has really said, we will implement and figure out the media arts standards, which are, we're directed to do. And it's going to be a very interesting year for them. They've given up a room and a lot of time, talent, and energy in the summer, working with the Purpitch and with the teaching and learning staff. And Principal Fort asked, he wasn't, I didn't break his arm to do this, he actually asked and said, we would like to volunteer. So I want to thank both Principal Fort and Vice Principal Awesome for shepherding this process, because it will be important for the other elementaries as well. So thank you for that, and the teaching and learning staff. And then I'm very excited about the Avid site visit, because as board members around the table know, we spend a lot of additional resources sending people places to do the mandated Avid trainings. And it's really thought that if we can establish a core group of schools where they can visit and directors can learn from, that they will be more likely to hold their spring conferences or their summer conferences here. And that is true this year. They are coming in June to Minneapolis, which is wonderful, so that means it reduces our costs significantly. So I know it was the start of school, there was a lot going on, but it was great to host them, and I think it's an indication of the success of the Avid strategies, not only in our district but in the metro area, that they're willing to host and have their directors learn from us. So thank you for that as well.
Thank you. Else?
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is Heights Lights. The board will discuss Heights Lights. Last time we had a presentation under Heights Lights, Member Landwear had asked for a, I guess the requirements or the definitions needed to qualify for the Heights Lights, and we read it at our last event when we actually recognized that. And through the conversation, we had a discussion as to, do we want to reevaluate? Are we comfortable with the, what the requirements are? And then we also had a conversation about the name itself. I mean, the, it was of course Superintendent Kelly, but currently it's spelled, Lights is spelled L-I-T-E-S, so we thought we might look at changing it to where, whatever we come up with for a name, it would be a little more grammatically correct.
Well, I will admit, it is just a little pebble in my shoe that every time we put this on the agenda, we have a misspelled word, and I adore the idea. So what I was wondering is if the board would consider thinking about changing the name to maybe Heights Highlights, and we could spell it L-I-G-H-T or something similar, because it's wonderful, and I love what we're doing with it, but it would be nice not to have a misspelled word on the, it's a small thing. But at any rate, I just put that on the table for your consideration.
Or Highlander Highlights?
Anything.
Anything that's spelled correctly.
Yes.
Okay. I can live with that.
And the other pieces is, and I personally think that, and for those that don't know, the requirements are the, a student who placed in the top three at Minnesota State High School League, state competition, and student or staff who have earned a state or national award in other areas, and that's the requirements that have to be met in order to be recognized under the Heights Lights, or the Heights Highlights, or the Highlander Highlights, or Heights Pride, whatever it ends up being. So I guess I would start with, any thoughts on the requirements? Are you guys comfortable with that? I mean, it's fairly stringent. It's not just anybody's going to get the award.
Right. I think they're good because it makes it meaningful, because it's a great achievement to be recognized based on these criteria.
And any thoughts or comments, or if we were to go to Heights Highlights, would be, people be comfortable with that? It's got to come back as an action item for us to approve it, just because it's part of our agenda, but if there's other thoughts too, I mean...
I just was curious, I wonder if we could perhaps put it out to like the journalism group or something for a name? Is there any possibility of that?
I am sure they would be open to that.
I don't know. Maybe just a student-focused name?
Sure.
If we want to, if we're going to...
We can ask them.
With one, it just, it has to be spelled correctly.
Yes.
No emojis.
No acronyms.
Exactly correct, yes.
Okay.
You okay with taking care of that?
Sure. I'll be happy to do that if you're all right.
If, I mean, only if everyone else agrees.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
It's not going to have to change immediately. Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on Heights Lights? Okay, passed on to administration. Next up is our action items, and first up is the Minnesota State High School League Resolution. The board will be asked to approve a resolution for a grant from the Minnesota State High School League. The presenter is Matthew Miller. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board. Tonight I will be brief, and I am here to ask for your approval on a resolution for a grant that the Minnesota State High School League gives. This grant is based off our free and reduced numbers, and it's based off of all of our students nine through twelve that participate not only in athletics but activities too.
The amount of the grant?
Is five thousand dollars.
And it gets used for the activities?
Correct.
Okay. Let's start with a motion to move it forward, if I could, please. Ted?
Second.
Discussion?
How does this get used? Is it for scholarships, or can you?
So usually the money goes back into most of my programs and most of my kids. Our fee structure for activities and athletics here in Columbia Heights is one of the best around. We, with partnership with Superintendent Kelly, we keep our fees down to attract more students, so it goes back into that fund.
Thank you.
Another discussion?
I actually have a question, if we can, it's actually kind of more a parliamentarian question. When we're doing the resolution, do I announce Member Nichols?
Probably. We haven't taken action on it yet, so we probably have to...
But he's not, he's not present.
You would just, you would read the role, and then he'd be absent.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted a clarification on that.
Sorry, Josh, I didn't mean to...
Sorry.
That's appropriate? Okay. I'll go ahead and read the resolution then. Form A Resolution of School Board Supporting Form A Application of Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas District Thirteen School Board recognizes the values of students' participation in extracurricular activities, and whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Columbia Heights School Board supports the district's application to meet Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. And for us to be eligible for the grant, this needs to be approved by the board, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Or if you would call the roll, please.
Lewis?
Aye.
Landwear?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Nichols?
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Next. Who knows? Next up is an action item for the annual report of staff development. The board will be asked to approve the annual report on staff development. Presenter is Xena.
Members of the board, teaching and learning meets with principles...
...goals as well as early childhood to align our professional development and to set goals in the areas of reading, math, and positive learning environments. Professional development is grounded in research, national standards, and equips our teachers to meet the state relicensor requirements and to work collaboratively for improved instruction. We offer several sessions in the summer months, also on the district in-service days, before school, after school, and online, and any other time we can find. You received this information item at our previous school board, as well as in your school board packet, and I'm here this evening to ask you to approve the 2014-15 Staff Development Report.
Get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion?
I would just say, staff development is critical, so the better we can do it, the better we will be.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Don't run away, Xena, I think you're up again. Next up is the annual report on the world's best workforce, and the board will be asked to approve the annual report on the world's best workforce. Xena?
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, you received an updated draft copy of the 2014-15 World's Best Workforce in the school board packet, and it was presented to you as an information item at our previous school board. This report addresses kindergarten readiness, third-grade literacy, college readiness, graduation rate, and closing the achievement gap per the requirements of MDE. In addition, the report provides information to the community, including highlights of Columbia Heights schools and programs, and facts and figures, and so on. This, upon approval, will be posted to the website along with summary information and will be mailed out to families. So I'm here this evening to ask that you approve the 2014-15 World's Best Workforce Report.
Okay. Get a motion to move forward. Ted? Second.
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion?
I just want to say, I read the report, and it's very easy to read, and it really lays out what we're doing very well, so I just think it's a high-quality, excellent report.
If I may, we, the, our, my, the Office of Teaching and Learning worked very closely with Director Mahan and his efforts to produce the, a really high-quality, appealing booklet.
It shows.
Anybody else? Further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And next up is the Assurance of Compliance with State and Federal Law Prohibiting Discrimination. We've got Xena, Nicole, and Lindsay.
Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly, members of the board, every year we are required by Statute 3535-2500, under Minnesota rule by the Commissioner of Education, to bring forward to the board the assurances signed by Superintendent Kathy Kelly that we are meeting all state and federal rules, guidelines, and laws regarding discrimination. So we bring this to you to assure you that we are meeting the letter of the law. Everyone in the district, doing the business of the district, is assuring each and every day that we do not have discrimination in our district based on state and federal laws. So we bring this to you annually.
All right. Motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Ted? Thank you. Discussion?
So this is a report to Minnesota Department of Education?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the resignation of school member, school board member Grant Nichols. The school board will be asked to accept the resignation of school board member Grant Nichols. Everyone received a copy of the letter of resignation. Start with a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
You guys want to do, Molly? I'll give you the second, Laura.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. You guys just...
We were just in concert here, because I didn't even hear you.
All right. Discussion.
I would move we vote via a division of the assembly voice vote.
When we get to a vote, when we get to that point, we can do a roll call.
I just have one quick comment that I'd like to make as we move forward here, and that is, regardless of the reasons, I'm pleased with the decision for Grant to finally step down, so our district and community can start the healing process and repair the damage that has been done. Throughout this ordeal, I can say that I have been unbelievably impressed with our students, staff, and the community at large. You make me proud to be a board member for this district.
Anyone else? Roll call, Laura.
I would just say, whenever we have a resignation, it's a sad event, so this is not a happy vote.
Anybody else? One more time, roll call, please.
Lewis?
Aye.
Landwear?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Nichols?
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is board topics. Anybody have anything for board topics tonight?
Yes.
What do you got?
Two. I just wanted to mention to the board that there's going to be two site visits for 916. One is on October 20th, and I believe that is for Capital View. I will not be able to attend. If you do wish to attend, you can contact Connie Hayes, or contact me, and I can contact them. I'd be happy to do that, although I'm not sure about, now, open meeting. Can I have everybody contact?
You can contact 916 either Linda Zerotka or Connie Hayes, and they'll be happy to take those.
You said that's October 20th?
Yeah, all of a sudden, I just realized I can't do that. So, okay, yeah, that's on October 20th. I believe it is at 9:00 a.m. It should have been in our last packet. I believe it was in our last packet. There's also going to be another site visit to Carner Blue, so for those who have not attended, that'll be on November 17th. I believe that's a Thursday, or Tuesday or a Thursday. I will be attending that one, because I never miss Carner Blue.
That's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Do you know what time that's at?
It's the 17th.
And the packet too?
No, I don't think the Carner Blue one is.
Okay.
No, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be coming up, so.
But when it is, I will be sure, if either you give it to me, or Superintendent Hayes, that I will put it in the packet for you.
Yeah, because I don't think everybody's had the opportunity to tour that facility yet. It's really quite amazing. And Lake Elmo will be, as soon as that one gets built, we'll be able to go see that one too, so.
Anybody else for topics?
I just have, I just have a correction. When I read off the budget for WMAP, I read the wrong line. The budget's actually $2,303,000. They're actually taking an income of $1,864,000, so they're going to be about $400,000 short. They're going to have to use reserves to cover that. So, the strategy is to increase the revenue, so that they don't have to reach into their reserves, which are about $2 million right now, so just want to clarify that.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I think that's every here.
All right. Nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:25. Thank you.